Good evening and welcome to January 20th, 2022 Board of Education meeting. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Our invocation will be led by Ms. Janet Rose.
Good evening. Julie Douglas was a former teacher, assistant superintendent, and my friend. Julie Forbes Douglas passed away peacefully at home in Idlet, North Carolina, on Wednesday, December 22nd, 2021. Julie was surrounded by her family, who had stood by her during a nearly two-year battle with cancer. She was born in Currituck County on May 20th, 1943, to the late Lathan and Margaret Evans Forbes, on the occasion of her brother Ralph's eighth birthday. She leaves behind her husband of 59 years, John Douglas, and son Jeff. She is survived by her sister Joanne Parker Gallup, brother Scott Forbes, and wife Sharon, and baby brother Tommy Forbes and wife Maria. Her memory will also live on with her niece, nephews, and their families, as well as her dear friends and extended family. She was predeceased by her older brother Ralph Forbes. Julie was truly an educator. She loved the entire process. She found joy being a student and fulfillment in being the teacher. She was a 1961 graduate of JP Knapp High School in Currituck. She went on to study at East Carolina University and College of the Albemarle before leaving North Carolina to travel with her husband John during his 20-year career in the Air Force. Throughout their assignment, she managed to study through the University of Florida and earn her BS from Delaware State, all while working for civil service. Their household was on the move from Anchorage, Alaska to Charleston, South Carolina, and then back to Alaska, Dover, Delaware, across the world to the island of Guam, back to Dover again, and finally returning to her childhood home in Powell's Point, North Carolina. It was in Guam that she had her first teaching assignment as a special education teacher. She had found her calling. Back in Dover, she earned her master's degree while teaching fourth grade. Retirement for John brought Julie back to the Currituck County school system. While in the classroom, she taught primarily language arts in sixth grade at Central and seventh grade at JP Knapp Junior High. She also taught Title I at Central and did the summer migrant program at Knapp. Her students were encouraged to put forth their very best personal efforts and set goals to reach their highest potential. You were treated as an important individual and not a random student. She found great joy in celebrating the successes of her students while under her instruction or well beyond the classroom. During her teaching career, she earned certificates of administration from East Carolina and retired in 2005 from the position of assistant superintendent while working under Dr. Dobny. In that capacity, she was able to impact the education of countless numbers of Currituck's children and their families. Retirement for Julie did not mean slowing down. Outings and shopping with her mother-in-law Irene Douglas and Aunt Lib Donski kept her busy and the family entertained. She was an active member of Powell's Point Christian Church, deeply involved with the ladies ministry and supporting missions far and wide. It was her wish that any memorial donations be made to this lady's ministry. Her passing leaves behind a void far greater than an empty pew. In the last few months of her life, Julie was brought into the care of Admiral Hossbus. The care and compassion of that entire team was nothing less than extraordinary. A memorial service was held on Monday, December 27th, at 2:00 PM at Powell's Point Christian Church. If you knew Julie, you knew her fondness for sweets and most of all, chocolate. And at that service, after it, they had a reception with all kinds of sweets. Julie was a top-notch educator. She will be remembered as an outstanding teacher and an outstanding administrator. She led by example, always acting in a professional manner. She based every decision on what was best for the kids. She is missed by all who had the pleasure to know her. On behalf of the Currituck Board of Education, we extend our deepest sympathies to John, Jeff, her extended family, and friends.
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
Could I add to that?
Yes.
As Jana mentioned, Julie was my assistant superintendent when I was superintendent. And I'd like to say she was the kindest, nicest, most efficient administrator I think I ever worked with. And may God rest her soul.
Thank you, Dr. Dobny. Julie will be dearly missed. What an impact for Currituck County and the kids that she taught in the community. At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Greta Nelson to come forward with her students. She's going to be bringing us the school spotlight tonight, and she's also going to be leading us in the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, I'd like to ask a fourth grader from Charlboro, Jocelyn Melina, to come up and lead us in the pledge.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
So tonight, I have with me Lacy Icono. She is a fourth grade math and science teacher at Charlboro. She's a veteran teacher. She's a member of our leadership team, which helps write and implement our school improvement plan throughout the building. Just this year alone, she has received multiple grants that she has written for materials, one of them being a Donors Choose, where she got a program called Intervention. That is a social promotional program that she uses during block and first thing in the morning. And then she got the Education Foundation grant, which she used that $500 to purchase some of the materials they're going to be using tonight. So I will invite Lacy to come and talk about what her kids are going to be showing you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Nelson, for the welcome. Again, my name is Lacy Icono. I teach math and science, fourth grade, at Charlboro Elementary School. And before I introduce my fourth graders tonight, I wanted to publicly thank their parents for bringing them, and their active participation is an integral part in their educational success. So thank you very much. I would also like to take the opportunity to, again, thank Currituck Education Foundation for granting my proposal for the science materials that were largely non-consumable, meaning that the circuit kits, the magnets, and the circuit components will continue to serve Currituck Charlboro Elementary students for years to come. So again, thank you very much. During our first semester in science in fourth grade, we learned about electricity, magnetism, energy, and energy transfer. And while some of that seemed very daunting with the hands-on materials that you'll witness tonight from my fourth grade students, they made it look very easy. I'm very impressed with them. So each pair of students that I introduce tonight will come up and show you what they decided and planned that was the most important to them to show you this evening. They decided how it would be presented and also wrote up a little note card to share with you their knowledge, sorry, the knowledge on the subject matter. Please welcome up Jocelyn Melina and Jackson Valles. They're going to be sharing with you their knowledge of two different types of circuits.
A series circuit is when all wires are connected to the source. For us, it is the light bulbs. That means when one light bulb goes out, all the light bulbs will go out.
A parallel circuit is made of branches so that the current divides and only part of it flows through any branch. The voltage across each branch of a parallel circuit, it's like a Christmas tree. When one light goes out, they all stay on.
And this is the most intricate, so everything has to be just perfect.
That's how it is when my Christmas tree lights.
Yeah. We can relate.
Okay, so when what? There it is. And I'll take that one out. All right, my next kiddo did have a counterpart. However, he's going to be brave enough to come on up and share his knowledge of both circuits and magnets and how they can pair together to make energy. If you want, you can take your mask off to talk. It's up to you. Go for it, buddy.
The construction of an electromagnet is very simple. A conductive wire, usually made of copper, is wrapped around a piece of metal, in this case, iron. Now, with the help of a battery, a current is introduced. This current starts flowing through the wire, resulting in the creation of a magnetic field. This magnetic field magnetizes the iron metal, thus resulting in the creation of an electromagnet. An electromagnet is similar to a magnet. It has two poles, light poles, repel each other while opposites attract. Also, it is able to attract iron filings. The only difference is that the magnetism is not permanent. Once the current is removed, magnetism may stop working suddenly or after some time. An electric bill is a good example of the effect on an electromagnet.
And my last pairing would be Cassidy Romeo and Avery Warden. And they're going to share with you some of our fun circuit kits for kids and how that can contribute to energy transfer.
This is a complete circuit. Powers energy from battery. Here's an example of a complete circuit. This one is a fan. The battery power goes through the circuit and into the fan like this.
Thank you to my brave students and to the board. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Icono, would you ask all five of them to come back up and state their name?
Absolutely.
And what grade they're in? And if the parents want to get a snapshot of them at the podium, please feel free to come forward.
All right, so each one of you is going to say your first and last name. Take your mask off so they can get your actual picture. And then just move right over here, and we'll make a line, okay?
Yeah, y'all can come right up here. You're not going to...
My name is Jocelyn Melina, and I am in fourth grade in Ms. Gray and Ms. Icono's class.
Way to go, Jocelyn.
Good job.
I'm Jackson Valles, and I'm in fourth grade. And I'm also in Mrs. Gray's and Mrs. Icono's class.
I'm Dylan Mazzola, and I am in fourth grade in Ms. Icono's and Ms. Gray's class.
My name is Avery Warden, and I am in fourth grade in Ms. Gray and Ms. Icono's class.
My name is Cassidy Romeo, and I'm in fourth grade in Ms. Gray's and Ms. Icono's class.
Great job. Thank you again for being here tonight and all your hard work and your demonstrations. Absolutely wonderful.
It's so exciting for me to see the science. We've made an emphasis and part of our curricular plan to make sure that in fourth grade, science is brought to everyone's attention. And Ms. Icono, thank you for your efforts and embracing this. I know this is right up your alley.
Yes, thank you very much. And due to inclement weather, if y'all want to slip out, we completely understand. Feel free to stay if you'd like to, but don't think you're going to offend us by getting back home safe.
But no school tomorrow.
No school, snow day.
I'm happy to see that a portion of those materials was funded through the Currituck Education Foundation. And I know that that group works hard to raise money, and they receive donations from members in the community that make those grants possible to our students. They're the ones that benefit. So thank you to the Currituck Education Foundation.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Durham. Please come forward and let us know what's going on at Currituck County High School.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am here representing Currituck County High School. I am the proud principal at the high school. I'm just going to kind of give you all just a brief overview. There's so many great things that are going on, but we had to keep it within our 10 minutes. So that's what we're going to do. I've got two young men that are going to play a piece for you today, and I'm going to give them an opportunity to kind of introduce themselves and talk about the multitude of things that they're involved with at the high school. We've got a PowerPoint. It had some music, but I'm just going to kind of go through it as it changes because I can see it down here. This was our freshman orientation, just a picture of student life. I think one of the things that we're trying to do this year is really make sure that we are student-centered and student-focused, and we want things to be student-led. We've had pep rallies this year that were led by students and put together by students because we want the high school to be something that they can be proud of and something that they feel like they have control of, which they do because it's theirs. Our club fair was put together by a group of students. We brought all our students together during lunches for two separate days, showed them all the clubs that they can be a part of so that they can really, really get the feeling of ownership here at CCHS. We had a blood drive that we had student volunteers. I can't remember exactly how many pints we took in, but it was quite a lot, and it's good for them to get that sense of community and understanding that we all have to do, we all have to do our part to make sure that Currituck County continues to move in the right direction. Our nursing fundamentals is one of our wonderful CTE courses, which we have plenty that students can be a part of and really focus on what they want to do after school and kind of just learn things they like, things they may not like. Just, it's a good thing. This is volunteering, which is a big thing with our clubs. Our kids do a lot of volunteer hours. They really, really do put and give back into their community, which is, I think, is a wonderful thing. Our Special Olympics, this is a really cool thing. I saw so many kids come out and be a part of this and cheer those kids on and really give them the love that they deserve. And we have a very inclusive school. I mean, our kids love each other, they care about each other, and it shows through their actions. So it was a really great event on that day. These photos, really what I wanted to touch on is it's really kudos to our teachers. Our teachers do a great job of making sure that our learning is student-focused. And what that means is that the students are involved in the learning. The students, it's organic for them. It's not just a sit and get. It's not lecture all the time. The students are hands-on, they're working, learning, making mistakes, having the ability to make mistakes and come back so that they can really gain that knowledge and be able to put it forth on assessments. So it's been great being the new principal there and just seeing all of the great professionals that I have the opportunity to work with as far as the faculty and staff. They're amazing, and they're really what makes the school run, and they make the student life really well. One of these right here, if you see this, the students did a shark tape experiment in Ms. Person's class. And so they had to come up with their own idea of something, of inventions that they would use, and it was a criteria, they had a rubric. I believe it was Mrs. Rose that came out and was it Ms. Apples?
I came out.
Okay, yes, that was a judge. And so it's really great to always have you all to come out and be a part of what we're doing. So again, we've got sports, and I know that's one of the things that we're known for, but we're really trying to really spotlight and put a focus on what we do academically at Currituck County High School, which I feel is amazing. So also with the fine arts, and I'll lead into that with our students that are going to give you the ensemble. We've had plays, we've had concerts, and they've been well-attended, and the students have done a fantastic job. So and everything that we do, it always goes back to enroll, enlist, and employ. And so we want our students to, one, be able to go whatever school they would like to go to, enlist in whatever branch of the military that they would choose, or whatever jobs that they would want to have. So it's really about those three things. And each step that we take and the love that we put into our students, and again, the faculty and staff, they're amazing. Today with me, I have also my two assistant principals, Mr. Michael McCullough and Mrs. Tina Mauer, who do an amazing job for us each day. Their planning, their persistence, and just their love for students and their love for CCHS, it shows, and we're going to continue to grow because of that. I believe we also have our math department chair, Mr. Robert Griffin, who is, at the end of the day, he's a pillar in our building. And his guidance and knowledge and his love for kids, it shows. And we have so many more that do for us and just you all. The support that we get from you, it matters. It does. I know that there's a lot of things that go on, and there's a lot of decisions that you have to make, but you all kept us in school. You've given us a chance for our kids to come every day, to learn, have fun. We've had dances, we've played sports. We've gone through all of the COVID things that we had, but at the end of the day, we're there every day, and that's because of you all and your love and dedication that you have. So we appreciate you and just thank you. And now I'm going to bring my two young people up. I'm going to let them introduce themselves and kind of talk about some things that they're involved with at the high school, and then they're going to give us a piece, and then we'll go from there. So thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Durham.
And this is Danny Walker, senior, and Dylan Stinks, senior.
I just have a few words tonight. Thank you, Dr. Durham, for inviting Dylan and I to be a part of this tonight. You know, Dylan and I can speak to this, but we've been able to be a part of so many great programs at the high school, whether that be from the academic rigor to even FFA or Beta Club. It's really a great joy to be a part of these organizations, and we're really excited at the way CCHS is moving.
Just don't make me talk.
I'm so sorry. I forgot to acknowledge that Mr. John Wheaton too. He's our band director at the high school. He does a phenomenal job. So during our Christmas concert, I would have paid $100 to go and see that. So he did a phenomenal job. So kudos to him and his job that he's doing with his program.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That was wonderful.
Dr. Durham, we really appreciate the work you're putting in at the high school. It shows every day. It is a pleasure to walk in that building.
Yes.
I agree. I've been out there for several things, and you've got a lot of good things going on. You've got an excellent faculty, great students, and your assistant principals and yourself. I don't know how you all are keeping the schedule that you are, but you're doing a great job.
Thank you so much.
Yes, you are. And we're very thankful for everything that you're doing.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you for being here tonight. Great job, Daniel.
good job. We've been with masks ever since we've been back in school. To me, the most important thing is to have the students in the building. Certainly, as a teacher, I would love to not have a mask on, but it's more important to be in the building than it is whether or not I'm wearing a mask, in my opinion. I'm not at all qualified to know what you're looking at to decide masks or no masks. You guys are getting that information and I understand that there's a lot of opinion both ways about whether students should or whether they shouldn't. To me, it's just more important that we're in the building. And if that means we have to continue to wear masks and I have to teach in masks for an extended amount of time, so be it. I know it's a difficult decision because there are a lot of strong opinions there, but from my perspective, we need to have our students in the school buildings. And if that means we have to wear a mask, then we have to wear a mask. So thank you for your time and thank you for what you do for the Currituck County Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Next, we have Mr. Jeffrey Sadoma. Mr. Sadoma, if you'll state your name and your address, please.
Hello, Jeff Sadoma, 101 Step Sideline, Moyoc, 27958. Just tonight, just anxiously awaiting the outcome of the discussions over the past few months regarding the continued adherence to a masking policy in the school district in the new year. Last year, the board was speaking regularly about removing the mask mandate in early 2022 and I hope we can remove the mandate soon, at least in the younger grades where I feel that learning incomes or learning outcomes are being a little bit more negatively impacted by the mask policies. I'm also hoping, I live in Glenmore, new neighborhood from Moyoc, and I'm hoping that in the early part of this year that the school district will be approaching parents and others in the proposed attendance zone for the new elementary school to give updates on planning and construction and start dates and things of that nature. A lot of the folks that live in our neighborhood and surrounding areas or the kids who go to that new elementary school are hungry for details. The last we had heard that the school was supposed to open in the fall of 2025, so that's why I'm here tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for being here and we're going to give an update later on this evening. Next, we have Mr. Jason Smith. Mr. Smith, if you'll come forward and state your name and your address, please.
My name is Jason Smith, 187 San Andrew Road, Moyoc, North Carolina. Good evening, school board members. Here we are again. Today, I was on the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services website and under the latest update, it says, "All North Carolinians should get the latest information on COVID-19 directly from reliable sources. The COVID-19 outbreak has been accompanied by a flood of misinformation from unreliable sources. Be thoughtful about what you read or hear about the virus and make sure you're separating rumor from fact before you act." I couldn't agree with this statement more. I didn't see many other statements said that I did agree with, by the way, I'll just say that. So tonight, I urge you to question the narrative. Much has happened since the last meeting in December. The NCAA has recognized natural immunity as being equal to vaccination. Dr. Fauci has been caught lying to Congress two more times. Myself and 13 of my employees caught COVID at our Christmas party. I had a fever and body aches for a day and a half and I was back to 100% after five days. No one had serious issues, including my parents, who are 70. Of the 13 cases, six of them were our only vaccinated employees, including the guy who we believe spread it to everyone. The FDA has recalled the PCR test. They actually did this in July, but kept using it because they didn't have an option. This is the test that this whole pandemic was based off of. They are getting rid of the test because it cannot tell the difference between COVID and the flu. Folks, we have been lied to. We are still using this test. Now, people will say, including our own health department, that they only recalled certain batches. This is a lie. On the CDC website dated 7/21/21, they used a recall for all PCR tests by December 31st. It says, quote, "CDC is providing this advance notice for clinical laboratories to have adequate time to select and implement one of the many FDA authorized alternatives." The PCR test is not one of them. We're still using this test. I shared a link to this page from the CDC website with Miss Ethridge earlier today. The CDC has also changed quarantine times from five days of isolation and five days with a mask. The CDC also says no need to test at the end of quarantine because the test can pick up dead viruses for up to 12 weeks. The CDC also says 75% of the people who died from COVID had at least four other comorbidities. The CDC has also pretty much acknowledged that normal masks do not work because now they're pushing N95 masks. But don't worry, the White House is buying 400 million of them, which will protect our over 300 million people for about a day and a half. On January 10th, CDC Director Walensky admitted COVID shots cannot prevent transmission. Folks, we have been lied to. Walensky also admitted about 40% of COVID patients who tested positive but do not have symptoms or are hospitalized for something else. And England has ended all COVID passports, mask mandates, and work restrictions. On the Currituck County Schools website, COVID protocols for 2021/22, it says, "Schools should follow the recommendations of their local public health department regarding quarantine. Local public health authorities make the final decisions about how long quarantine should last in the communities they serve based on local conditions and needs." This is yet another lie. I spoke to Nicole Tatum with the Currituck County Health Department this morning. She explained to me that you, the school board, sets the quarantine policies as well as the mask policies. The North Carolina Strong Schools Public Health Toolkit is a guidance. It is not a law or requirement. It is a guidance, a guide for people who are too busy or too lazy to do their own research or pride critical thinking and common sense to their decisions. I do not believe the school board are those people, decisions which in fact have negative impacts on our children and my children. I brought my copy of the newly updated January 10 Stay Strong guidance. On page three, after the cover and table of contents, the second bullet point is vaccination, including the booster if eligible, is currently the leading public health prevention strategy to end the COVID-19 pandemic. Promoting vaccination can help schools safely return to in-person learning as well as extracurricular activities. The vaccine does not stop you from catching or transmitting the virus. It's documented. So do not use this guidance as a cut and paste to set our policies for our kids. It's up to you guys. You guys have the power to make the decision on your own, use critical thinking, ask questions, get information from people, but don't use this as what we have to do. It's just a guidance. You don't have to use it. There's plenty of other examples in there. I know my time's up, but there's links in there to a science brief, not a peer-reviewed study, it's a science brief. I Googled science brief. There is no definition for it. What it is, is cherry-picked information that they wanted to include on here. It's not a peer-reviewed study. That's how science works, okay? If you click on the link, it will reference a mass study from Bangladesh. Bangladesh. Our CDC has hundreds of million dollars in their budget every year and they can't do a mass study that will clarify whether they help or not, whether they're harmful or not. Please use judgment. Don't use this. Throw it away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts and information.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the exception of item F and that'll be on next month's agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is approved. Student board member reports. Albert, would you like to go first?
All right. JPNAP Early College. It's recruitment time at JPNAP. Postcards have been mailed to each CCMS and MMS eighth grader. Alert calls will be sent out from both middle schools on Friday with JPK information. JPNAP will visit both middle schools on Tuesday, January 25th, and conduct information sessions with eighth graders. JPNAP will also host a parent information Google meet that evening from 6:00 to 7:00. All Currituck County eighth graders and their parents are invited to attend this virtual session. A meeting link will be shared with all eighth graders and the link will be posted on the JPK website and Facebook page. For more information about JPNAP recruitment, contact Mrs. Denise Fallon at JPNAP or visit the JPNAP website. Knott's Island Elementary. Knott's Island Elementary School has started off the year with a B-A-N-G bang. Mrs. Madkins, an exceptional children's teacher, was presented with books that she received through a grant from the OBX Community Foundation. She wrote that she wanted to foster language development by providing her students with books that had an age-appropriate format with plots that would be appealing to her students. The entire staff has taken pictures in front of our Be the Eye and Kind banner as we work to foster kindness and the benefits of being kind. Our fourth grade class has been researching each region of North Carolina and creating digital postcards that are being sent across the state. They are receiving postcards back from those they sent and are tracking this information on a map on a classroom bulletin board. Our first semester award ceremony was held today, January 20th, as we celebrated our student successes thus far. Finally, we are getting back into the groove of things after our long holiday break. Life surely is good on our island. Moyoc Elementary School. After student success was celebrated last Friday with semester one award ceremonies, Moyoc Elementary School is now gearing up for a busy February. Upcoming activities include Love the Bus Week and Guidance Counselor Appreciation, as well as our annual Booster-Thon Fund Run event being held February 25th. Thanks to several generous community sponsors, our student and staff t-shirts are fully funded. Moyoc Middle School. Moyoc Middle recently celebrated the academic achievements of their students in the First Semester Awards Assembly. Students in each grade level were recognized at separate award programs. High school counselors will be coming to Moyoc Middle School to meet with eighth graders who will be selecting high school courses for registration soon. Parents will be getting more details in the next few weeks. The Bulldog Store returns next week for those students who have earned Bulldog Bucks for positive behavior. Charbro Elementary School. Charbro Elementary is Booster-Thon-ready. We will kick off our Booster-Thon fundraiser on February 3rd. Our fun run will be Friday, February 11th. If you know a Mustang, please consider sponsoring them for their fun run. They earn individual prizes and raise money for our school. Daniel?
Thank you, Albert, and good evening. I'd like to start off with Central Elementary School. Central Eagles had a great start to the new year. We are holding our award ceremony this Friday and we are excited to celebrate student achievements with the weather that may be canceled, but they're still super excited to celebrate their students. We are also thrilled to be celebrating our school guidance counselor the first week of February. Love the Bus will also be celebrated mid-February. Students and staff are excited to show how much we appreciate everyone. Currituck County High School. We will host our CCHS students and their families on February 3rd, 2022, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. From 6:00 PM to 6:30 PM, we will briefly meet with the families in the cafeteria and then release them to walk around and check out the courses and clubs that CCHS has to offer. CCHS has released a class registration schedule for current CCHS students and rising CCMS and MMS students. Please check out the 2022-2023 Currituck County High School Course Catalog. CCHS is proud to announce that Park Scholarship nominees have moved on to the semifinalist round for the North Carolina Park Scholarship Program. CCHS is very proud of each of you and wishes you the best of luck in the next round. Currituck County Middle School. Currituck County Middle School had their Semester One Awards Assembly today where we celebrated over 100 students who achieved either A or AB honor roll for the first semester. We also recognize our Students of the Month and our Most Improved Students for the first semester. Monday, we are having our Winter Sports Pep Rally where we'll be recognizing our boys and girls basketball teams and our wrestling team. Griggs Elementary School. JES, excuse me, GES is happy to welcome Ms. Greta Hill to our Mallard family. Ms. Hill is our new fourth grade self-contained teacher. She is a graduate of Chauan University and ECSU with a BS and Masters of Education in Elementary Education. We are excited to announce that our new playground equipment in Mallard coloreds, blue and yellow, has arrived and has been installed. The new playground is designed for our upper grade students and will be utilized for grades three through five. Friday, January 14th, we celebrated our first semester awards day ceremony in our auditorium. We enjoyed having parents and families back in the building to celebrate our student achievement. It was a wonderful morning for all. Jarvisburg Elementary School. Jarvisburg Elementary kicked off the new year with a lot of great things. Ms. Heflin, Ms. Hart, and Ms. Doughty, our AIG Director, were all awarded grants through the NC Aquarium Scholars Program for our students to participate in many field trips. Our first-ever semester awards program was a success. We enjoyed celebrating our students' accomplishments in the traditional awards format. The JES staff nominated our head custodian, Ms. Terry Woodley, into the national contest for custodian recognition called Custodians Are Key. Today, we learned that she will move on as a finalist and received a gift card from the company who sponsors the event. All grand prizes will be announced in May. We sure do appreciate all our custodians do for JES. And I do have one more exciting announcement. The student board member application is going to open on Monday, January 24th, so this Monday coming up right around the corner. Ms. Jones will be sending out an email to all students at CCHS and JPNAP Early College. So if you're interested in a position, please be on the lookout. There's going to be lots of good information in that email. One of the things that I can tell you is the application, there will be a letter of recommendation from a teacher at the school. In the interview portion of this process will be held at the February Board of Education meeting, so we are super excited to meet all the respective candidates. Thank you.
You, Daniel and Albert, we appreciate it, as always. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Ludes and he's going to be recognizing JPNAP Early College.
Absolutely. It's always a pleasure to celebrate accomplishments and we had, our district, we received a letter from the state commending the graduation results at the JPNAP Early College High School with a graduation rate of 98.3%. Ms. Fallon, if you'd come up?
Our first-ever Semester Awards Program was a success. We enjoyed celebrating our students' accomplishments in the traditional awards format. The JES staff nominated our head custodian, Ms. Terry Woodley, into the national contest for custodian recognition called Custodians Are Key. Today, we learned that she will move on as a finalist and received a gift card from the company who sponsors the event. All grand prizes will be announced in May. We sure do appreciate all our custodians do for JES. And I do have one more exciting announcement. The Student Board Member application is going to open on Monday, January 24th. So this Monday coming up, right around the corner. Ms. Jones will be sending out an email to all students at CCHS and JP-NAP Early College. So if you're interested in a position, please be on the lookout. There's going to be lots of good information in that email. One of the things that I can tell you is the application. There will be a letter of recommendation from a teacher at the school. In the interview portion of this process will be held at the February Board of Education meeting. So we are super excited to meet all the respective candidates. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel and Albert. We appreciate it, as always. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Lutz, and he's going to be recognizing JP-NAP Early College.
Absolutely. It's always a pleasure to celebrate accomplishments. And we had, our district, we received a letter from the state commending the graduation results at the JP-NAP Early College High School with a graduation rate of 98.3%. Ms. Fallon, if you'd come up?
So, thank, is this on?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much for recognizing JP-NAP this evening. So, Albert, I'm not sure what happened to the beginning of what I posted for you to read. So I'm going to share some data that is in line with this. So we got our results. Our students, of course, take classes at the College of the Albemarle, and our fall results came in. We were really, really excited. We had a total of, I think, 137 students took 436 college courses with 86% grades in the A-through-C range for the fall. So I'm really excited about that. Congratulations to our students, and that's why we win awards like this. So that's a big, huge savings to parents in Currituck and for students, and gives them a great start on their college career. So again, thank you for this recognition, and just wanted to share that information about the amazing students at JP-NAP.
Fallon, thank you for everything you do. Great job.
Absolutely. Hats off to everybody at JP-NAP.
Yes. Facilities update. Dr. Lutz, he's going to bring us up to date on some of our expansion projects, our new construction projects. Mr. Smith, this may be the information that you're looking for.
This will become a regular part of our board meetings as we, as the growth continues to grow exponentially, apparently, in our county. And we do have a plan to address the growth right now, and then we need to work collectively with our county commissioners to ensure that our long-range planning meets the needs of our county. Our current status is that Moyac Elementary, our Board of Commissioners approved an amount of $14.2 million for the expansion of Moyac Elementary. And we're going to take a look at what does that expansion mean for Moyac Elementary, and how do we increase our space and make the campus safer at the same time. It's going to start with the demolition of our kindergarten building. That's going to begin before the end of the month. We're waiting on a couple of permits. And once those are squared away, we'll move forward with the demolition of the kindergarten building, which we'll take a look at here in a moment. Moyac Middle School, our county commissioners approved an amount of $7.1 million to expand Moyac Middle School. That expansion is going to run about two to three weeks behind Moyac Elementary School and will encompass adding on classrooms to the wings at Moyac Middle School. We'll take a look at this. So we have a couple aerial shots that we can take a look at. The first one is Moyac Elementary. And what we're looking at there is the kindergarten building that will be demolished. It was built in the '70s. Like much of the 1970s construction, it was not exactly the finest construction. It was an open building, and when we were working with our county government, it was decided that it would be a better use of our tax dollars to actually demolish the building and put a two-story building in rather than try to fix the existing building. We also have the cafeteria. And you can see that the open space within that cafeteria outside, this will now be enclosed with the expansion project. And we're going to make the cafeteria itself larger, and it's going to accomplish two goals. One, we get a larger cafeteria. And two, we increase the safety of the building. Right now, our students actually have to leave the building to go to the cafeteria. Moyac Middle School was a little bit easier project. Still expensive, nonetheless. We're going to put additions on to each of the wings, the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade wings of that building. The expansion is going to take place while we are in school. We're able to do that without disrupting school whatsoever. We're also going to expand the cafeteria as well. The cafeteria is in need of an expansion. That's our core capacity space. And with the middle school approaching 700 students in the very near future, we need to make these additions. Again, that's Moyac Elementary School. And you can see a circle of the kindergarten building and where the cafeteria is going to be upgraded. And Moyac Middle School, I mean, the additions will be where those circles are. We're also going to have a renovation of the multipurpose room, which again is a savings to our taxpayers by renovating that room rather than adding on off the back. And it will really support the ban program in particular. As far as our new construction update, we had purchased land this past year. Our county commissioners purchased land off of Talz Creek Road. We do not have a name yet. We'll just refer to it as the New Northern Elementary School. This past week, a RFQ, or Request for Qualifications, went out, and it will close on January 28th. And this new building will house approximately 750 students. Every month, we'll make sure we have a timely update as there's going to be a lot of activity moving forward. And I look forward to sharing these updates with you.
Thank you, Dr. Lutz. Any questions from the board?
No, I just want to say that the safety aspect of the Moyac Elementary School, I taught there for 25 years. And not only did the students have to leave to go to lunchroom, but kindergarten, up until this year, had to leave for the library or lunch or anything because their building was actually isolated. So it's an excellent safety move on our part. And then, of course, the new classrooms will be badly needed.
And, Dr. Lutz, how many more classrooms did you say it's going to add at the elementary school? Wasn't it?
The expansion part on the elementary road, it'd be a total of 16 classrooms.
That's going to be huge. And I think what the parent, Mr. Smith, he can correct me if I'm wrong. I guess what the chatter is, maybe Moyac families are kind of wondering, is it going to be more of like a northern, I mean, where exactly? I guess this is something we'll discuss during redistricting, or whether which kids will go to Moyac, the current Moyac Elementary, and then which kids will go to the new, you know, school.
Those decisions will be about two years out. Yes, you were correct that we're targeting September of 25, 2025, for the opening of that new building. Discussions regarding redistricting will occur about a year prior to that.
I'd just like to say I'm happy to see all of this happening. You know, I've been on the board about five years, and we've met every year, I believe, with the commissioners, and we've talked about the growth, and we're going to have to do something. And, you know, Dr. Lutz has really taken the bull by the horns. And he goes to all the commissioners' meetings. He's communicated with the former county manager and now the current county manager, the interim county manager, about our needs, trying to make sure. And I'm just thrilled to see we've got an addition going in the works at Moyac Elementary, one at Moyac Middle, and we've got plans for a new elementary school. Because we need these schools to take care of all this growth that we're seeing in the north end of the county. I don't think it's a surprise to any of us that we needed it, but I'm happy to see it coming to fruition.
Yes.
I agree.
And please keep us updated.
Absolutely.
Yes. I'm glad that you're updating us as well as the public because there's a lot of speculation, a lot of questions that the public has. So I think it's great that we'll be updating them on a monthly basis and keeping them informed. We have been talking about the needed school facilities for many, many years. I've been serving on the board since 2011, and we've been meeting with the Board of Commissioners on an annual basis and discussing the possibilities of what needs to be done, what the forecast looks like. Now granted, the last two years, I don't think anybody would have had any idea that real estate in general would explode in the way that it has over the last 24 months or more. And so that has just sped things up at a more rapid pace. And we're trying to stay ahead of it. And I think we're doing a pretty good job working with the commissioners and the interim county manager. And I applaud your efforts, Dr. Lutz, for everything that you're doing, all the meetings that you're attending, nightly meetings that go pretty, pretty long. He's there. He's keeping the board informed. And concerning COVID, he keeps us informed of the daily figures every single day. You know, we'll get the updates from him, and I really appreciate everything that he's doing. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Ms. Virginia Arrington, our Student Services Coordinator. She's going to come forward along with Dr. Lutz and give us an update concerning masks in schools.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Lutz. The first thing that I want to start off with is the update to the Strong Schools Toolkit that was updated on January 10th of this year. And these highlights are taken from pages 15 and 16 of the toolkit that speak directly to what our school nurses follow as far as COVID protocols and quarantining from school. So a COVID-positive person can return to school now five days, after five days of quarantine instead of 10 days. It does state that they can return to school, and then they have to continue with five days of wearing a mask to round out that total of 10 days. But right now, we're wearing masks currently, anyway. The COVID-positive person is not required to have documentation of a negative test in order to return to school. Currituck County Schools has never required that we have a negative test to return to school. But I did include it in this update because it is mentioned several times in the toolkit. A person does not have to be excluded if they have been vaccinated and boosted, if eligible, if they come in contact with someone that's been diagnosed, and if they do not have symptoms. A person does not need to be excluded if they have been diagnosed with COVID in the last 90 days, as long as they do not have symptoms. A person in a mask-required school setting does not need to be excluded from school after a close contact. This includes school exposures where there's even unmasked times, such as lunch, or recess, or a sports activity, as long as they do not exhibit symptoms. When a staff member or child has tested positive for COVID and has been exposed, or has been exposed, we ask that individuals, please continue to consult the school nurse. So now we're going to move into the numbers of positives and quarantines. So I separated the chart a little bit differently. So it's information that you've seen before. The first week of school was mask optional. And then the second week of school, September, well, the second month of school, September 7th to October 1st, we were still going into that period of time where quarantines and exposures were lagging, so our numbers were still up. So then, we have the monthly updates with the positives and quarantines. Since we have been back from school from January 6th to January 14th, which was a little over five days, we had 101 positives and 79, or excuse me, 78 quarantines. And this week alone, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we've had 114 positives and 31 quarantines. And so I did do a little math for you. So Tuesday, we had 73 positives, so I just took a rounded number. So if we looked at 70 students that were positive for COVID, if we were unmasked at school, we would have to quarantine the close contacts. And we have been averaging about six close contacts per positive when we first started school because of seating and closeness or changing classes and that kind of thing. So if we had not been wearing masks on Tuesday, we would have had 490 students absent from school. And if we take that and multiply that times the five days of quarantine that they would be out of school, that would have been 2,450 absences. So moving to the chart, so that you can see those numbers graphically, the numbers have gone up since Christmas. So, and again, you can see that there. Just an update on testing. Again, our numbers continue to grow because people continue to register for the tests as they, as needed. 874 tests have been given. 158 have been positive. And the turnaround time now, for about a week following Christmas, it was about two to three days turnaround time because the volume of tests that were being done across North Carolina with this particular company that we work with. With the three-day weekend last weekend and us not collecting samples for the three days, it's caught itself up a little bit, so probably one to two days now. And then just as far as vaccines, just wanted to give the public some information as far as what Currituck County Health Department and North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services says. They do now have Pfizer boosters for children ages 12 to 15. The CDC also recommends a third dose of Pfizer for children ages 5 to 11 who have compromised immune systems. And the wait time has been moved from six months to five months for their booster shot. They are also accepting appointments for the doses of Moderna. And again, they should receive their third dose or booster within six months. They are accepting appointments for booster doses for children ages 12 to 14. And they continue to offer appointments for Pfizer and Johnson &amp; Johnson for adults ages 18 and over.
Thank you, Ms. Arrington. Any questions for Ms. Arrington from the board?
I just wanted to clarify for the public that when we're talking about the five-day quarantine, it's five days when symptoms start, correct?
Correct.
Not if you, your child comes down with something on Friday, and then Monday you test. It doesn't start over on Monday. It's Friday. As long as they're symptom-free after five days.
So if they come down with symptoms Friday afternoon, they test on Monday. Tuesday, they get back the result that they were COVID-positive. We still go back to Friday when they first exhibited the symptoms. Yes, ma'am.
And of course-
As long as they don't have symptoms anymore.
Right. So the rule of thumb then is, at the end of the five days, if they've been fever-free for 24 hours without medication, and if their other symptoms are getting better. So same as any other illness.
Right. I was getting ready to say, I mean, that's pretty much how we do it. Thank you for all of that presentation and work. And I do, I know for me personally, I understand the, you know, mask frustration. But as I think it was Mr. Griffin said, our main goal, and always our main goal has been to keep kids in school. And when you, when we start talking about quarantining, that is a lot of, that would have been a lot of kids that would have been out for a lot of days. So, I mean, that's-
Well, even if you put quarantines aside, we're looking at a high number of absences. And our numbers with masks last week were 30 more than what they were without masks the first week of school.
Yeah. We have a lot of teachers, and we're having trouble, you know, having substitutes come in. And teachers are really stepping up to the plate and helping wherever they can. They're covering other teachers' classes. But they're tired. They're worn out. They're going above and beyond a teacher's duty. And I really appreciate everything that they're doing. It doesn't go unnoticed, and we really appreciate it. And I'm sorry, you know, that we're having to deal with this. I too would rather not have a mask on sitting here tonight. But in order to keep our kids in school, I don't think we have an option. So with that being said, do I have a motion concerning masks?
Can I just say a couple of things?
Sure. I do appreciate all you're doing, too. And we do not have a full-time nurse at a couple of schools. Is that right?
That's correct.
Who does the, who handles the COVID when they're not there, if they're not there full-time?
So in some instances, they are, they work outside their hours. And then in some instances, it's me.
Yeah. Is there any way we could maybe increase their hours to be full-time until we get through this COVID?
Or at least pay them overtime?
Yeah, or pay them overtime.
Because I believe it's Knott's Island and JP-NAP that don't have-
And I think that Ms. Fallon was the one that was handling COVID.
Yeah, I just want to say, they have increased the hours of our nurse this week because of, and I guess you'll explain that grant, was they were able to increase their hours. There's a small amount of time that she's not there. But my second- There's a smaller amount of time that she's not there, but my secretary and my assistant principal and I basically sort of handle situations that I always call Virginia.
So the hours have been increased for all of our nurses and we, again, we're trying to be as thoughtful as we can and try to keep things as, understanding that sometimes there is spillover of that work, but it also tends to be our smaller buildings which do, does have a smaller number of students when we look at those things.
I also have questions about, I know that there's some rules in place now where if you've been vaccinated, you don't have to isolate if you're exposed, but are we allowing like faculty members that say have four or five kids in their class that come down with COVID, can they go and get the test?
Yes.
They can?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We, so staff members are, can register to get the testing at school as well as students and we do test asymptomatic individuals if they'd like.
Okay.
So we're not saying just if you have symptoms.
Okay. And just one more question. I know at one point that teachers that had to quarantine, I don't think they were docked, they didn't have to take leave. Is that right?
No, we, we've worked with our teachers that if they had to be quarantined and they were able to teach, we, we set it up so that they could teach remotely.
Are we able to do that with other non-teachers? Are we able to work with other faculty members if they have to be quarantined?
We always try to work with all of our faculty members to the best of their abilities. At the same time, these new guidelines, the most promising thing that I saw that came out of there was that unless you're symptomatic, you don't have to quarantine if you're a masking district. And I've been waiting to see some language around that. In other words, if you're sick, you're going to stay home, which is what you should have done in the first place, but we're no longer going to quarantine asymptomatic, people that don't exhibit symptoms. That's why you see those quarantine numbers not even as a one-to-one with cases.
Well, I, I understand, I know our numbers have gone up and we certainly can't, I don't think we can take the mask off right now, but I would like to see, you know, I talked with you, Dr. Lutz, earlier in the week about, I read something in the paper about another district having a number in place that when they reach a certain number with quarantine, they're going to start wearing masks again. I, I'd like for us to look at having a number that we can shoot for, you know, when, when our numbers do go down, maybe we can try no mask again and then have something in place that would lead us back into them if we reached a certain threshold. Because I'm with Mr. Griffin, we got to do what we got to do to keep kids in the classroom.
That's the biggest thing.
I believe it's our neighboring county Camden.
Camden.
Yes. But.
Well, and, and one of the main issues is, and I can't remember if I heard this from somebody here or where, but our main objective is to keep kids in school, but if our teachers get sick.
Yeah.
Then keeping kids in school.
Without a teacher.
Without a teacher is not, that's not going to be productive. So keeping kids in school, learning is what, what we're looking at. And so you mentioned the fact that our teachers are exhausted and I know and most every one of you know that when your immune system, when you're tired and when you've been stretched to the limit, your immune system goes down. So we need to also be protecting our teachers and looking after the fact that many of them are caretakers for their adult parents, their older parents. I would have been in that situation just a few years ago. So it's not, I mean, it is that we want our kids in school, but we want them in school learning. And so in order to do that, we need to protect our teachers also.
Yeah, percentage of quarantines would just be an arbitrary number that we would come up with anyway.
Yeah, that's true.
And that being said, in order to try to provide the maximum safety for our students and staff, I recommend that we continue, or I would make the motion that we continue with masks and reassess once again at the next meeting.
Okay, I have a motion, I would like to second that motion. Any discussion?
And maybe perhaps work on a, maybe work on a number like Ms. Rose mentioned, to maybe come up with something so that we're not just giving parents, you know, next meeting, next meeting, at least they can kind of know what we're shooting for, looking for.
I mean, if we're looking for our positive cases and our quarantines to go down to whatever, whatever is, we feel is safe, you know, maybe we can just, you can look at it and share something with us in the next week or so.
We can look at those numbers and we can come up with numbers. I mean, I, I cautious not to be arbitrary with those numbers. I, those who know me know I like data and I like hard, raw numbers and so on. And so I, my hesitation here is I want to bring something forth that I can feel confident is a decent threshold. I thought when we decided in December that we were going to go mask optional, our numbers had declined to the point that I was comfortable.
I was excited about it, yeah. So perhaps those are numbers we could look for again.
That's what I, and I guess, yes. I mean, to me, we look at those numbers daily and we felt like we had reached a good point and look forward to taking the masks off. At the same time, so we'll, we'll go out and we'll, we'll look at others and I'll talk to some neighboring districts as to what they're doing and how they arrive perhaps at a number and when we meet, when we convene all, and in between, we'll discuss.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have a first and we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We will continue with masks and as Ms. Peters and Ms. Rose have said, we will try to look at the information, figure out maybe at next month's meeting, see what those numbers need to be. And if we want to do a soft opening with say K3, the smaller children, kind of gradually get back into it, but if we see those numbers spike and go off the chart again, we're going to have to call a special meeting and, and make some changes, but I think that's, that's a step in the right direction. So let's, let's work on that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arrington. Do I have a motion, oh, one thing I'd like to, to, well, I'll discuss that information items. Do I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I have a first, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Information items. For our work session for February, we have a schedule change. We are going to be meeting on February 9th at the Knapp Professional Learning Center at 4:00 PM and our Board of Education meeting will follow here at the historic Currituck County Courthouse at 6:30 on February 9th. Ms. Rose, if you would like to close with your board member comments, please?
Oh, my goodness, I'm first? Well, I did, I have enjoyed prior to Christmas, getting around to the schools. I enjoyed lots of sing-alongs and Christmas concerts and the dance, I popped into the dance at the high school, which was fun. I'm happy to see and I'm happy to hear that JP Knapp and CCHS have planned a junior/senior prom for the end of April and I'm happy to see that our, our upperclassmen will have the opportunity to participate in a prom. Shawboro has got a fun run coming up and I believe maybe Moyoc Elementary as well. I'm, I'm happy to see the kids exercising, they're raising lots of money for their schools and, and I, I, you know, hats off to all our teachers for coming back to school after Christmas. I hope you were rested, I know you've worked hard, not just teachers, but all faculty and staff. And I, I hope that 2022 is a great year for all of us.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Ms. Peters?
Okay, I'll try to keep this short. The holidays are over, but I did want to publicly give a shout out to the Nats Island Elementary School staff and the art teacher, Mrs. Wilbright, for the night community play we had that, the North Pole's Got Talent. It was just unbelievable.
It was phenomenal.
We, the community turned out, I think it was one of the biggest turnouts we've had for a program in many, many years I can remember. The deputy even had to direct traffic. That's just unheard of on Nats Island. On Nats Island, so it was great. So I really wanted, and this was her first year, so I told her she had some big, you know, she's set the bar high, so great job to Ms. Wilbright and all the Nats Island staff and the students, they did a great, they just were really great. And as, you know, we talk about the mask, it's always the main thing and I just wanted to thank again our nurses. I know that they are working so hard and when these numbers spike, I know that it's just extra work and, and I really appreciate them. And for all the staff, my daughter was telling me how the librarian had to come in and fill in in her class while her teacher was out. So, I mean, I know that the, the teachers are all filling in and staff's doing all kinds of different things and, and it goes back to our, you know, we're keeping kids in school and that's the most important thing. So I appreciate everyone for doing that and thank you to the parents for being here and tonight, I enjoyed tonight. Of course, our room, Daniel always impresses us, I mean, playing instruments for us, that was very impressive. And it just makes me proud when we have these highlights of all the great things going on in our schools and I think it just makes us all proud. So, and thank you to parents for being patient with us as we're always working through this. And I hope that everyone has fun tomorrow and we get lots of snow and everyone can stay home safe and post pictures. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Ms. Kraft?
Yes, so I visited all of our schools this month. I was privileged to attend, to attend award ceremonies for JP Knapp and Moyoc Middle School, congratulations to them. I also attended a basketball game at Currituck County High School. I was happy to see the bleachers filled with fans, not just students, not just parents of players, but our community. And if you get the opportunity to attend one of the night's games, please try to attend, they need, they need our support. I want to extend a special thank you to the Currituck Kids Organization for the invitation that they gave me to their Kickoff 2022 event. It was wonderful. But more than that, a huge thank you to that organization for all that they do to make Currituck students, to help Currituck students and teachers. And I want to assure the community that every decision that our board makes is to assure that the students are successful, but that they're also safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kraft. Dr. Dobney?
Yes, I'm not going to prolong the meeting, especially forgetting the weather that everybody thinks we're going to get, so I yield the rest of my time to Dr. Lutz.
Because we love that.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Susan Mizell and her office, they've been working diligently to meet deadlines set forth by the state regarding bonuses and back pay and a number of other challenges that other state employees didn't have to face, but we did. So thank you. Also, shout out to Currituck Kids and Melissa Reynolds, who ran an outstanding program this past Thursday night. Once again, our staff, I'm so proud to work for the student staff in this community. We have continuously found a way to keep our kids in school and it's really, makes a decision to say, we're not doing remote learning tomorrow and we're going to have a snow day.
Snow day.
It makes it a lot easier because I know the efforts that we put in and, you know, there's nothing that brings out the kid again and all of us than thinking, oh my gosh, oh my goodness, so, good stuff. Quick, our wrestling team is undefeated, I'm going to keep saying that moving forward. And with that, this is National School Board Month and I would like our board members to come up front as we have a little gift for you.
Is he still going to prolong? I guess I should probably take my mask. I'm going to be close to all of you guys. Albert? You guys are.
Their hat scars and.
Can we squeeze in just a little tiny bit? Just. All right, that's perfect. If everybody looked this way, ready, one, two, three, one more, one, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I still like it. It's useful.
Again, I'd like to thank the board for their efforts. Again, I've said repeatedly that serving as a school board member for the almost past two years is not what I think any school board member in the United States signed up for. But you, you've done an outstanding job and I appreciate your support.
Thank you, Dr. Lutz. Thank you. Well, I hope everyone had a well-deserved Christmas holiday. Hope they are well-rested and ready for 2022. I was able to view, to visit a few of our schools and I'm able to attend the Jarvisburg Elementary School Award Assembly last week. Two of my grandchildren attend Jarvisburg, so that was special to my heart. It was very organized and the kids were very, very happy. I'd like to thank Greta Nelson and Dr. Durham for being here tonight and spotlighting their students' success. Thank you to all the faculty and staff for your hard work and dedication to our kids. I want to thank everyone for hanging in there and continuing to do what you do on a daily basis. I really appreciate it. And with that being said, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned, thank you.